We're live.
All right, well, I'm gonna get going then. So I'm gonna call. The, what is this, December ninth meeting of the Highland Park Planning Board to order the meeting. Has been noticed. Meeting of this notice was provided to Star Ledger, the Home News Tribune and Highland Park Planet on January twenty ninth, twenty twenty one. In addition, notice of this meeting via Zoom was faxed the Home News Tribune an email to the Star Ledger. Uh, let's see, and on the Borough website. All right, we've changed our, our meeting announcement. Uh, and on the bulletin board at Borough Hall on December seventh, twenty twenty one and have remained continuously. Posted as required by law, general call please.
Ms. Hammond.
Here.
Mr. Brusher.
Here.
Ms. Hadhazy. Mr. Hale.
Here.
Ms. Hand.
Here.
Mr. Kluger.
Here.
Mr. Lenaris.
Here.
Mr. Malay.
Here.
Mr. Nolan. Mr. Pearlman.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Cusenza.
Here.
And Mr. Koch.
Here.
All right, thank you, Jennifer. So our first order of business is our minutes from our November fourth meeting. Um, looks like it's already been revised with a few corrections. Does anyone have any comments or corrections for those minutes? Nope. Seeing none, uh, I would accept a motion to have those minutes.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Second it by Pedro. Um. Roger, you would think after ten years.
Voice vote is perfectly fine.
Um, all in favor of me say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? And I will abstain since I was not at the meeting.
I need to abstain as well.
Not at the meeting, Paul was not at the meeting.
So I have to abstain as well.
And Matt.
And. And Paul, okay. Alrighty, um, so Chris, that leads us to your presentation.
Uh, yes, I think on the agenda is also to ordinance consistency review, so. I know there's a few other things to take care of, so I'll try to get through my presentation.
Okay, good.
Okay, um, so Jennifer, I should be able to share my screen, right?
Mm-hmm.
Right. Up slideshow. Any second now. There we go. So, um. I think guys, we discussed over the last couple of years that we were sort of waiting for this residential form base code to happen. Um, and this is actually almost two years to today since we adopted the. Laney's plan element of the master plan, which contained recommendations as to how we would. Uh, you know, tackle a residential form base code based on some issues we identified in the RA and to an extent at RB zone. Um, for those of you who were on the subcommittee or the master plans subcommittee back in two thousand nineteen. This may be sort of a refresher, but for all others, this would probably be new material. Uh, so I'll try to be as concise and clear as I can, but without getting too much into the weeds. Uh, fortunately, all of the weeds are in the master plan element if you want to review it further. Um, so the purpose of this presentation really is to. Sort of providing a courtesy presentation to the planning board, because as you know, when there is an ordinance to be adopted. Uh, relative to the land development ordinance, it's introduced by council, the planning board does a. Consistency review to ensure that's not inconsistent with the master plan and then sort of let it go, like the baby's just handed off, it's taken away. You don't really have much of a chance to really comment on it, other than say, is it consistent or not? Since this is a pretty big change to the ordinance, Terry and I, Terry, Jennifer and I thought that would be a good idea to just do a review of these. Uh, provisions since this really a big change to the zoning ordinance for residential properties. And the presentations that we gave in the master plan two thousand eighteen really is only had a couple of slides on it, so I'm gonna go into a little bit detail. Uh, the agenda will be to sort of hopefully in a minute kind of describe what sort of sprung this effort, like what, what did we find that really got us into this? As well as the proposed amendments to these zoning ordinance themselves, uh, which relate to really three things. One is the calibration of bulk regulations setbacks and whatnot. Dealing with small lot exemptions, what can we do that so they don't need variances for everything? Uh, and then the really, the meat of it, which is the residential form base code as we know it. Uh, so we had this, you know, beautiful finely colorful map for the zoning map. Uh, one of the things we identified was that. What's interesting and unique to Highland Park is that unlike a lot of other towns. It mainly has one residential district, the RA zone, that's sort of a beige color. Most communities that I'm familiar with, including the touching in Princeton, have four, eight or twelve zoning districts and they have different requirements based on. Uh, neighborhood character and they tend to vary in lot width and lot area standards. Highland Park has one. Pretty basically half a town and we identified through the analysis of the bulk regulations that two out of every five lots. Two out of every five residential lots are not conforming. That's what's showing on red, so it's a whole, and it's not just sort of located in just a triangle as we know it, it's throughout the entire community, right? Uh, other issues we found was not only is it sort of creating a problem with undersized lots. Uh, but the regulation, since they're so consistent, creates this little odd relationship between the standards and neighborhoods because you have. Hundred foot wide lots with ten foot setbacks, you have thirty five foot wide lots with ten foot setbacks. Even though the neighborhood of character and prevailing conditions suggest that on a hundred foot lot, you typically have twenty or forty foot setbacks told. On a thirty five foot wide lot, you could have a setback as narrow as three feet. But the requirement's ten, so there's a little bit disconnection between the zoning ordinance and the, you know, real world that is Highland Park. Uh, so. Uh, this is like, again, the first of three sort of amendments. Uh, one of the things we will suggest doing as indicated in the master plan would be. Well, set prevailing setback standard, so if the neighborhood has thirty foot setbacks, the new house should be thirty, not twenty. If the neighborhood has ten foot setbacks, the new house should be pushed back to twenty to comply, it should be ten. Uh, and then there should be some flexibility to deal with those cases where, you know, they're off by an inch, so obviously we want to work with that and not create hurdles and interpretation. You know, issues, but so as some flexibilities that could vary between one or two feet within that prevailing setback. Um, with regard to side or setbacks, we talked about instead of having a fixed ten foot setback on each side, no matter what lot size you are, what if they were proportional? Depending on the lot size. If you ever narrow a lot, you have narrower setbacks to sort of more in, in keen with the neighboring homes. Uh, and then for the narrow lot, other larger lots, you could get away with larger setbacks. Uh, so anything in green is sort of showing reducing those setbacks, making it easier for homeowners to add in addition. Uh, and in some cases for developers to put a new house on a lot with more, I would say reasonable setbacks that are more in tune with the neighborhood. Um, and the same concept would apply to building coverage. Right now it's thirty percent building, forty percent impervious coverage, no matter what lot size you have. Again, same concept, it's a small lot, you could increase it a little bit that way, you could get a driveway without triggering variance. Uh, and then for the larger lots, you can get away with a smaller footprint and still get a huge house. Uh, and that sort of deals with the environmental conditions trying to, we're trying to get away from having so much coverage on a lot, and I think this sort of deals with that. And the, the current ordinance already allows for five percent addition of coverage for decks. What we suggest is continue that, but also clarify, it's also previous coverage. Uh, and also maybe for porches, that way it's sort of incentivizes porches, because porches, as you see later. Uh, has a role in dealing with that garage setback, as you probably. Uh, dealt with on the Cleveland Avenue application a couple of months ago, and maybe there's a room for five percent bonus for when you do green infrastructure, so reward people who do the good thing. Uh, and the second thing would be dealing these narrow lots, typically if you have an undersized lot, if you're a homeowner or developer. Triggers a variance. Now for a homeowner, I mean, for a developer, it's probably not a big deal, they got the money to do it, but for a homeowner, it's sort of a social justice and equity issue, right? If you have a small lot, likelihood to afford a planner and architect and attorney, it's all eighteen copies of plans, wait two months for a hearing. And then go through it all and find out you spent half the budget on getting approval instead of the building permit. Many cases that shies away. Uh, a lot of homeowners who do an improvements. Uh, and the other part is that the homeowners who could afford it are likely on larger lots, but those are in a smaller lots are less likely to do so. Uh, but which, which probably explains why there's less activity on the small lot, so what, what we're trying to do here is. Really say for single two family dwellings, just get rid of the. That trigger for automatic variance for a lot size lot with something that they cannot control, if they can comply with setbacks and coverage, that, that should be all they need to do. Uh, what we can discuss is whether or not that should apply to new homes, like make the developers come in and, you know, kind of shape the house. With the planning board or is it, and make it this exemption only for single family homeowners, that way they get the benefit of being exempted from these things. And relative to cider setbacks, if you have a house with a three foot setback, do they really need to come to the board if the addition is on the other side or in the back of the house? So this sort of adds exemptions for those types of conditions. Um, and now the residential form base code. In itself, so we're gonna talk about all these things as well as briefly, I'll go into accessory structures and projections, so. The idea here is, um, we're really trying to create a graphic based zoning ordinance and make it clear what's permitted, what's not, and in addition to adding provisions that are. More in keen with the, um, the neighborhood, and no matter what neighborhood you live in, so the obvious thing is obviously you need a front entrance that faces the street. Public sidewalks should be required. Right now the zoning ordinance does not require sidewalks. I, I think Bruce has been successful in asking for the sidewalk in all these applications for thirty plus years, so. Kudos to you Bruce for getting that done, but, uh, this codifies a requirement that public sidewalk is required in every single application. For a new home in a large addition and private walkway should be provided to the public sidewalk. Regarding the front wall articulation, we're talking about the shape of the foundation wall really, as well as the fenestration, the number of openings. Uh, we think this should be limits on how long that wall could be, because what? Has there ever been a house that looks good when it's really, really long without a break, other than the White House perhaps? But that doesn't exist here. Uh, so it can be long, but you need to step in and out, and some, some of the tweaks I've researched is that maybe for a one story house. The setback doesn't need to be four feet, maybe we can get away with two, uh, so those are some. Um, advancements I've been considering over the past couple of months. Limit, really limiting in blank walls and sort of requiring a minimum fenestration as well as spacing between windows without getting into design issues, this is just bulk standards. Uh, but more creative use of it, uh, for the sidewalls, this, it's really the same thing, just slightly reduced version. Um, on really narrow lots, you don't need windows the entire way. Uh, you can get away with longer walls between breaks, so, but, and these are sort of designs that we've done as home builders throughout the country, so these are some reasonable, reasonable standards. Uh, by the way, if you were curious, why forty feet? We, we looked at what looks good aesthetically is, um, you know, if a five bay colonial house typically is about forty feet wide, so that that's sort of a nice round number to work with. Uh, moving on to garages, it's sort of half the code is about garages, uh, so obviously we, we talked about sixteen foot setbacks for a while, so this codifies that. We've are including provisions that you can count a porch as long as it's a certain size, that way one. It incentivizes porches, which is a great feature of a house, it adds that sort of public realm, that relationship, the handshake to the sidewalk. Um, and there's other provisions that were not in the master plan, but are in a current ordinance. Uh, I think the Borough worked hard on years ago with about the fifty percent of relationship to neighborhood, I, I think that has a role here. In allowing for some reduction of that setback, provided that the garage is a smaller element of the house. Um, I, I think that plays a role here, which I'm gonna be elaborating on that. Further, that I think that analysis of the neighborhood is important because I, I think we should look into this, what's called dynamic zoning, it's sort of. Regulations that change neighborhood by neighborhood. Uh, with, with this one single provision, so it's more respected of the neighborhood character, and I think it plays a role in these provisions. And of course, there's sort of provisions making, ensuring that the garage is a certain width. It shouldn't be the whole width fronting the street, it should make a snow house. Uh, in our mind, it should not be more than half of the house. Uh, and then dealing with that sort of awkward space between the top of the garage doors and the second floors, that's we minimize. Uh, when the garage is turned, perhaps setbacks would be sort of reduced, and we're gonna elaborate that, instead of being sixteen feet, it could be eight, could be four if it's a one story garage, there's nothing. And in the case of a, I think some people live in a ranch home, those houses are, have flush garages and they don't look bad. So there, there could be conditions where we could allow those minimal setbacks, uh, in those situations, we just need to spell it out. On corner lots, the idea is keep it away from intersection and on narrow lots sort of force the driveway and access to be on the side street unless of course it's a one way street. Uh, so there'll be provisions to sort of deal with that, uh, it's a sort of a public safety issue, try to get driveways and garages away from intersections. On narrow lots, the idea is maybe there's opportunities to allow for just the garage to extend into side yard, because. A detached garage can be setback about five feet from the setback line. What does it matter if it's attached to the house? This is the question we raised, and I, I think there is some. Support for that, I know the mayor at some public meetings raised concern about having windows facing windows, uh, that's, that's something I'll look into unless the planning board thinks that's not a non-issue. Happy to get feedback on that. But the idea is on narrow lots, there could be opportunities to allow the extension into the side yard, and it should have no habitable space above. Don't want to let builders cheat and add a bedroom on top of that setback space. Uh, driveways, I remember a couple, maybe a year or two, they'll ask Scott and Mike. I'm like, I can't find it in the ordinance, what's the regulations on driveways? And they said pointedly, there are none. And I was shocked, uh, so here we're providing standards to reduce the, the gap in the streetscape, make sure driveways are not more than ten feet wide. Or if I get feedback, maybe twelve feet's fine, again, I want that feedback. Uh, as I prepare the ordinance, uh, and then the driveway could flare out into the yard. This should be set, uh, again, just like the garages should be setbacks in intersections and there should be minimum setback distances from side lot lines, unless of course, and we'll add in provisions for shared driveways. And so on and so forth, I mean, and I think there's also provisions where we can have no setback on narrow lots, because if we're trying to encourage detached garages, even a three foot setback won't work. So we need to be cognizant of that, but in those conditions, we'll have to have some, some sort of engineering grading standard to ensure that sheet flow. On driveways don't impact neighboring homes. Uh, there could be provisions, uh, for, for now, we have a U shape driver vision, maybe there's a provision for circular driveway, I don't think that exists very. Many places in Highland Park, uh, this was an important feature in Princeton when we worked on their code, as among others, including motor courts. Uh, I, I think in Highland Park, we only need a provision for U shape driveway, so there's certain standards of how, uh, that should be designed. And of course landscaping standards, uh, these are often tough because. They are generally treated like a site plan provision, which are not, you cannot apply site plan provisions to one and two family dwellings, you can't say it should be compatible. Uh, it should be, it should complement the design of house, you have to stick with bulk regulations when it comes to single family homes, so. And when I say bulk regulations, we're talking like dimensional standards, like numbers, so I, I've worked with stack. To really hone these provisions, so this is two years ago, so I'm gonna revisit it with them again, see. Like based on applications to receive the last couple of years, can we make them stronger? So these will provide minimum standards for the number of plants to be provided along the front end side of homes. Uh, as well as stipulating that it must comply with the boroughs, do not plant this and any other applicable planting standard. And trees, these are front yard trees, so there's specific regulations we're putting in, uh, for the number of trees that should provide any yard based on the setback and lot width, right now you don't have any regulations. So if, if someone has a tree removal plan, they can just replace those trees and not plant any more other trees. The goal here is kind of recapture that tree canopy that makes, um, communities like Highland Park attractive with the livable street. And this serves also reduces, uh, heat gain on houses and it provides a, has some value to home, so. The idea here is to set a standard for shade and fire and trees in front yards and based on. The Cleveland Avenue application as well as what you were dealing with on, on the American properties across the street, I think it's worth, maybe there should be rear yard requirements. For new homes. Uh, and then lastly on landscaping, street trees, again, you don't have any standards for a minimum planting, so this would be, you know, provide a street tree every twenty, twenty five feet. Uh, and of course, there will be standards where if the planting strip or the verge is a certain dimension, the street tree needs to be on the opposite side, uh, so we'll, we'll be flexible on that. In response to stacks comments, they've been great, giving me some feedback on that. So, next step, so. That's sort of, again, the basis of it, so a lot of it's what you saw in the master plan, I, I sort of talked about a couple of other things that we could introduce based on what. The planning boards has been dealing with, um, applications over the past couple of years, uh, after I complete this, are, are we happy to get some input, are, are there any other provisions I should think about? Uh, or if there's one I should pay special attention to, but in the meantime, I'm working with Ed Schmier, uh, the Borough Council, Borough Attorney. On the legal framework, um, I, I think maybe Roger could comment on or just nod and say. The provisions that we want in here have to be in zoning, not design standards, meaning. It, it cannot, when, when I say design standards, I'm talking about site plan standards, which typically look applicable to commercial development and large subdivisions. If we want a, any standards to be applicable to one and two family homes, they have to be in zoning, because with regards to site plan. According to the Minnesota Laney Law, one and two family dwellings are exempt from site plan, so we have to make sure what we do here are, is in zoning. Not in design standards, I've had, I've provided some, yeah, thank you, I provided some feedback to Mr. Schmier, so just waiting for. A coordination call that we're basically, what it comes down to is what section number should be putting these provisions in? Really, that's really, it comes down to, uh, the, long story short. And, um, and then the typical steps for an ordinance would be Borough Council, first reading, planning board consistency review and the second reading or public hearing. Uh, so all this will start sometime in the new year, because we, from what I understand. If we introduce an ordinance in a prior year and the carries over to the new year, you kind of have to start over again, so. It, it's actually a perfect time for me to do this presentation in December for the planning board, because we will then be ready to sort of start fresh in January or February if needed. Uh, and that sort of completes my presentation.
Okay, great, thank you, Chris. I guess I will. I, I guess we don't really want to maybe get, um, too far in the weeds, since it seems like things are still more, um, in the conceptual stage in terms of types of areas that you're going to. Uh, work on and you're not actually making recommendations, can we assume that? For the different areas that you just went over, you're gonna come back to the board with like the actual. Recommendation before that goes to first reading at council.
Um, my sense was, and let's get your feedback on this, that about ninety percent of what's in the master plan recommendations is probably good as is, and this, we're just gonna run with it. Um, so this presentation was merely, merely like an overview and so refresher, this, this is what we did two years ago, uh, as well as to those who weren't on a subcommittee who were in the weeds. I, I don't think I would have enough time to get into every single provision.
So, this is just to, so I understand what your, what your response is, like in other words, you were saying that, you know, obviously this will codify everything. But when you were talking about, for example, like minimum fenestration, right, there was a diagram, we're saying there's gonna be a diagram, but obviously there are no numbers, there are no formulas, so are those formulas already established?
Uh, they are in, in the recommendations in the master plan, like for the front wall, it's about ten percent and sidewalls is five percent as an example. Uh, so those, those details are already in, in the master plan, uh, recommendations, um. But there are some that, as I talked about through the presentation, that maybe we should revisit it. Um, and then based on some applications you've heard over the past couple of years, are there any provisions that you thought, you know, I think. I didn't like how this came out, or I think we should have more focus on this, but that's sort of the feedback I'm looking for.
Patrick, did I see a hand?
Yeah, just a quick question, how are you gonna define neighborhood? That's kind of a, you know. And, you know, I'm just curious if that's going to be something you're gonna codify in a way, or at least give guidelines.
From a, the simplest way to answer that is, I'm not gonna define it, there's really no reference to neighborhood. I, I think the best way to deal with that is through the concept of dynamic, dynamic zoning, which is sort of, the regulations sort of adapt to the lot size. And the prevailing setbacks and the prevailing condition of what the garage placement is, that will define what can happen on that lot. In each neighborhood, because I think we know each neighborhood's different, so the zoning will change and adapt to that, yeah.
I, I guess in certain areas, it's just a hodgepodge of different, you might have a religious building here or in a apartment complex there, and then you have single family homes and. I guess, are you talking about neighborhoods being similar types of lots with similar types of houses and that would set the standard for that group type of thing, or?
Yeah, I think.
I don't want to belabor it, but somebody's gonna pick it apart, so.
No, and I, I expect it to, because it, when you say it should be a neighborhood based thing, that well, aren't we, shouldn't we be doing a new zoning map where each neighborhood gets its new zone, right?
Um, yeah.
I don't want to do that. Yeah, so the guideline would be when there is consistency between, um, for example, yard setbacks. And garage location to design, those will drive what the new lot needs to be designed. When there is a hodgepodge, sort of like South Eleventh, I think you were dealing with, we had apartments across the street, you sort of come down to the base condition. Which is sixteen foot setbacks and prevailing setbacks will always be a feature. Uh, sorry, when I say sixty foot, I'm talking about the garage, uh, otherwise the main dwelling will sort of respect the existing condition. To reveal about the buildings, even if it's non-residential.
But aren't you generally referencing the fact that a, that a neighborhood's not, not like three or four streets, it's rather what, what the neighborhood is in terms of the streetscape that's on that neighborhood, and, and if there's. If it's all residential, then you look at that, that, um, character. If it's a hodgepodge, as Patrick said, then you may, I think there was at least one, uh, residential approval that you guys looked at where. You know, you looked at the idea that, well, you, you have one house on one side and one house on the other side and everything else was a little different, so that was kind of the neighborhood, those, those two houses. And I think you have to be practical in terms of, uh, recognizing that. Uh, Highland Park does have some, some unique. Um, streetscapes, and I think in, in some ways, maybe there's almost the idea of, of talking about neighborhood, maybe the term, and I'll, I'll be happy to talk to Chris about it. Maybe the term ought to be streetscapes as opposed to neighborhoods, because neighborhoods imply, you know. Maybe more than one street, a larger area.
Or uses, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Chuck?
Okay.
Um, I was just gonna, actually, I think I agree with Rogers, uh, maybe using the streetscape as the defining characteristic for. Looking at setbacks and other bulk standards, because the street really, when you talk about, you know, what matches, what's the, you know, what in, in a high street. In a, in a street where there's lots of different setbacks and different single family, two family and institutional or religious, uh, structures. You know, the street is what really defines that, that deal, so on residential streets of low speed, you might, you might be more permissive for. Buildings to be, homes to be closer to the street. That would make more sense versus, you know, um, a boulevard like on North Side, those homes tend to be a little set further back. So I think maybe, maybe sort of when you, I like to see a little more connection to the streets, a little reference to the street. Um, and the speed of the street, design of the street, the width of the street, I think was Roger was referring to, I think that's a real, that's would be really a strong tie, I think that'd make a lot of.
Yeah, I wonder, um, this really, in my mind is, actually, there's a lot of ways to deal with that, and some, some codes and throughout the country. It really complicated, like, oh, you must measure a thousand feet in each direction and make that determination, but if you're a homeowner. You can't afford to hire an engineer to do that, so it has to be practical. Um, I, I actually like the way the ordinance, current ordinance deals with, um, garages with respect to the block. That sort of deals with the street scape as well as the neighborhood to a certain extent. Um another way would just be, just look at one house to the left, one house to the right, and that's your prevailing setback, um but there's there's something better, but looking at the whole block. Um, at least when it comes to a new house, but I have to think about how that would be applicable for a homeowner, because again. I I don't want to create a hurdle, more hurdles than there already are for homeowners to do additions to the homes.
Now, I mean.
Are you using the term block similar to street, in other words, the the block from, you know, this intersection to that is intersection on both sides, is that what you mean?
Yes.
That's what I'm referring to, yeah. Uh another question, I guess, I had was, um, you mentioned that you will have some provisions for shared garages, and um I know there's a few in town. Um where the lots are fairly fairly narrow, uh and the solution at the time was to have shared driveways and um. You know, I was at, it seemed to work for places where I, where I know people who own properties that have shared driveways, it does seem to work for them. Um and it does remove the number of ker cuts. Um and I'm wondering if that's something that we may keep in the in the revised ordinance to, and actually even say that this is a reasonable solution when there's a need for. For garages and stuff, to have them.
Yeah, um, I I I think it's worth doing, because I recall Scott and Mike reached out to me about. There is a share, existing shared driveway, where a homeowner want to put a fence down the middle. And kind of like, ah, kind of freaked out, and it was gonna almost go to the zoning board for a, an application for an appeal. Fortunately, the issue kind of went to 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 bed, um but it made me realize, you know, there's no. Nothing in the ordinance that allows that to happen today, even though, how many times have you seen in your neighborhoods that exists, if you want to do it today, you couldn't. Um so, but to your point, Jeff, uh I I think we should put it in, there may be, I would say we should add in other provisions uh subject to Roger's suggestions about. Perhaps in those conditions, we need a deep restriction to keep it open, to prevent from fences from going up. Um and then, but, well, I I want to shake our hands away from dealing with people refusing to shovel snow and whatnot.
Uh Alan, did I see a hand? Alan Williams, no?
Oh.
Uh, man?
Um, sure, uh, uh, is it okay if I go Rebecca?
Yeah, yeah, you were first, go ahead.
Okay, um, so, so I certainly think that that. How um streetscapes or blocks or neighborhoods get defined and characterized is something that's gonna be really important, so I I appreciate you looking. Um more into that, um one of the other things that you had, it was about rewards for green infrastructure or creating green things. Um and and again, I just wanted to sort of make sure that that, I think it's a great idea, I'd love to reward that, I just, I want to make sure that. What does that mean, like, does it mean, what is the the threshold that you get the bonus, you know, or something like that, and. And that seems to me like that could be quite complicated to sort of define, you know, what what exactly. What amount of green infrastructure do you have to do in order to get the bonus, so. I I'm sure there's other places that have done that, but I think that's gonna be something that that the details on that are gonna be important.
Yeah, I would say for now, I may punt on it, and as it, it would be a second ordinance to get those details right. Uh so the simplest thing you can do is when there's a recharge area of certain square footage, that percentage. Um is sort of given back as, doesn't count as coverage, uh but then you need, you know, O and M, deep restriction, all all that stuff. Yeah, okay, up to a certain percentage.
Um, and then, um, I I'm not sure that this actually makes, so you know there's a revaluation coming up of the entire. Borough, right, the entire, um, we're we're on on the docket in the next couple of years for doing a revale. Um, and and um, that's a big deal, that that's, you know, as that. That that's gonna be a lot of um of of teeth gnashing and and um. Uh, and and I'm I'm just sort of, how would this integrate with, you know, the, is this gonna put chaos on top of that, or is this? You know, I'm just, I I know there's a lot on our plate, um but I do know that that's coming up, and I just like to consider that as we as we move forward.
Yeah, I, to be honest, I'm not sure what the answer to that is, how zoning would affect the evaluation, but my sense it has only a little bit, if any.
And and that's, and that's Matt, why you are on the council and we are on the planning board, you get the rest of those and we don't.
Fair enough, so I'll ask it again at council, because I don't know what to do.
So I need an answer at council then.
There we go, you give me an answer at the council, there we go. All right, thanks, Chris.
Sure, okay. Yes, uh, well, building on the green infrastructure point about the bonus coverage areas. I I I get a little nervous, because there were actually multiple places you could qualify for bonus coverage. And while I would like to reward and incentivize people for building the way we want them to build things. I if you keep doubling up and tripling up on the bonus coverage, suddenly you have an impervious lot, um water runoff issue, so. It's something to, that I'm I'm a little bit wary of, using, you know, just more lot coverage as instant reward, because we flood. We should, we should allow that open space to to be protected on those lots, which is why we have the coverage issues in the first place, so. That was, that was one of my concerns, um. One of the things I didn't see in the design standards had to do with something that came up with the three new constructions that went up at the corner of Lawrence, and I think. Madison or North Fourth, which one, there was a set of three new constructions that went up, and what. Happened is, and it I think they had a shared driveway too as part of their application, which was fine and dandy. But what ended up happening is, once they actually built the things, the one on the side, which I think is on Madison next to the center school on the backside. They ended up building it so that the first floor was like ten feet up, lifted into the air. You know, i- it was one of those moments where you looked at the final product and went, huh, that didn't occur to me. Like, they they took our thirty five foot house and lifted it ten feet in the air, and and it it it's okay looking, it's. For where it ended up, but it did raise the question at the time, how high are we gonna let people build from ground level? To beat the water table and maintain their thirty five foot height, so, just that something, if if it's not there, something to be aware of.
I'm glad you raised that up, first of all, I'm sorry, I missed it. That's something I thought about for a long time, I didn't put it in this presentation, because it's something we did for Princeton, because there was a very important issue there. Um, what we ended up writing was that the. This, the maximum distance between the finished floor elevation of the first floor and existing grade cannot be greater than four feet. When we say existing grade, because we don't want people mounding up dirt and saying, this is the grade, this is the grade, it's higher now, that's the new grade, and it's five feet higher than your neighbors. Um, that worked successfully, I mean, cre- creates headaches for engineers, for developers, obviously for homeowners with the existing lot, it's not, it's a non-issue. So I will definitely include that, I'm happy to share how we wrote that to you.
And I and I had that, I had that in another municipality, and that's exactly how they end up handling it. Because of the concern that you say, okay, thirty five feet, and then you have a mound, uh as you said, that, you know, is is twenty feet. For whatever reason, and now you've got a house that dominates the neighborhood, but which, but still meets the standard for the height. So I think that what Chris is really def- uh defined is the way it was done in a town, another town that I represent, and it worked well.
And Chris, I would also look um a little into our code, because I I recall, although maybe it hasn't been codified, that we. After that particular project, I, because at that time, we were talking about how we were gonna measure our overall heights, and I think then, as Rebecca. Has a good memory and points that out, that that we learned, oh, you know, everyone always finds an exception to the rule, and he then he builds up the grade. And we we may have already addressed that a little bit, so I would, obviously, you'll look, you'll look into that, but all this, to my, I just have one sort of last point, which is. Um, I keep writing down little notes, and it and it kind of comes back to, does this put a lot of onus on um the zoning officer, like, I hear you saying. Oh, because you're now gonna look to the house to the left, the house to the right, however we define neighborhood, whether it's the street, the block, across the street, whatever. It it sounds to me like, obviously, that's now gonna be before a zoning officer, right, it's not before the sport, it's not before zoning board, that's the line of defense. And does it leave um either a lot of, this, uh uh my question is, does it put, leave a lot of discretion to the zoning officer? Or the way, or is it that the way this is articulated, it's very formulaic, it's very matter of fact, you know, you're measuring this, you're measuring that. You're looking to the left, you're looking to the right, and then that's what, you know what I mean, because otherwise, um, it it seems like. It could become a can of worms, where you have a homeowner who's making, presenting what they, what they, you know, what, how they think it falls within the code. Versus how a zoning officer read it or or a zoning board would.
Yeah, um so my response to that would be, in in two ways, one would be, I don't want to create a situation where Mike will want to hurt me. Uh so we're gonna try and make it as simple as possible, I also don't want homeowners to hate us, we want to be here for a long time. Um so as part of the ordinance, uh we will provide guidance of how to do it, and maybe even diagrams of how to do it. For example, if you have to measure the setbacks in neighboring homes, perhaps measuring from the curb to the front of the house is sufficient. Because if we're gonna allow for variation, not being hyper-specific, is that sort of a loose looseness, it could be acceptable. Uh again, that's something we need to discuss with council, consistent review, like, how loose can it be, um but. In the end, I want to create something that is workable and does not create more work.
So with, so in other words, our zoning application would change, and and the questions, instead of being like maybe one sheet, it's. Now two-sided, and the questions are, you're also providing those measurements about. But then you're expect, I I'm just sort of thinking, I mean, this is something I have, not just sitting on this board, but I have a practical experience with helping. With applications as they're doing projects, so I'm just like picturing like, you know, you're not like, if you know your neighbors, great, but if you don't know your neighbors, you're really not supposed to like go walking and measuring their whatever, so. Then does Mike go out and take, I'm just, you know, obviously, we're not answering these questions right now, I'm just throwing it out there that, um, I think those be, because. We're saying there's gonna be, you're, I I've heard you say several times, there's, it's a unique situation, or, oh, it's gonna be based on that particular street. Um, you know, it's not like, okay, now all the setbacks are twenty five feet, and you know, if it's on their survey, it's not twenty five feet, you got a problem, now it's like, well, now I gotta go measure. Or, you know, or maybe that that stuff's easily accessed on a, on a tax map or this, or, you know. But I just think those are the kinds of things that I would pay attention to.
Yeah, I I think for for the purposes of, like, for example, the uh prevailing front yard setback, we really ought to have a surveyor do it. Um, that probably only makes sense on new houses.
Right.
I don't think, oh, we should put the onus on a homeowner to try to figure it out.
Typically, you show your existing survey, right, so you can show, you're gonna be able to show your own existing survey, you're not gonna have access to your neighbors if we're saying you're looking for consistency in a.
Yeah.
Front yard. I see both Allens have their hands up, so I'll just say Alan, and we'll see who speaks first.
Which one?
Okay, we'll go with Alan Williams first.
Okay, um, following up on Rebecca's comment, uh. The, one on Madison Avenue had a pre-pre-built foundation at is, as is two thirty eight Cleveland. And I think two thirty eight Cleveland also i- is rather high, the first floor is rather high compared to the grade. Uh and maybe we need some, maybe we need some discussion of if the foundation is uh pre-built.
Well, the house is still measured from grade to the highest point of the house, so in other words, even if they, like, in other words, you can make a house where your foundation wall comes up higher. You still, then you're gonna have to have lower first and second floors in order to still stay under that thirty five foot or thirty two or thirty five.
And repor- and reportedly, partially dealing with that new provision that we discussed after Rebecca brought up that point, where we have the maximum four foot distance between finished floor, first floor. And um the existing grade, that will control really the exposure of the foundation wall. Ideally, if it's a porch in front of it, then you see less of it, and then you have provisions from foundation landscaping that should shield some of it, as they all play together. Um but, so Alan, are you referring to purely the height or perhaps the finish of it?
I I think I was referring to the, where the first floor is to the grade, um and also, there's always Bruce Koch's favorite thing. The found, the bottom of the foundation has to be one foot above the seasonal water table, it it gets complicated.
Yeah, I I would say we should codify that too, and in the touch, and I, I, we worked on a, like, sort of residential stormwater ordinance. And uh we had a requirement, in in addition to that four foot requirement at the first floor of grade, we also introduced a minimum separation of two feet. Between basement floor and season high water table, and the response was, well, we can't have a basement, and for us, it was too bad.
That's right, that's the whole, that's the end result, because what ends up happening in a lot of these houses is that they raise it so that they can end up having a. A live, well, I don't want to say livable, but, you know, a eight foot high ceiling in a, in the basement that can be used for any number of reasons, and then that raises the first and second floors. So, um, and that's why you need the, that's why as a builder, you need the extra uh fill to to raise the grade, and that's what the existing grade. Will eliminate, existing grade reference will eliminate.
Yeah.
Uh Alan Kruger?
Uh actually, it was an accidental hand, so I I pulled it down.
Uh, Pedro?
Oh, you're muted, sorry.
You're muted.
No, nothing, thank you.
Uh.
Was waving.
I have a, just a quick question, um, Chris, um, did you get a sense of, um, or calculate how many of the uh non-conformities would be? Two of five, um, in the RA zone, how many of those uh parcels would be? In the new, in this new ordinance, be removed from non-conformity status, like, how many more conforming lots are you able to? You know, put into conformity within revised ordinance, have you calculated?
Uh so, that measurement was relative only to lot area and lot width. All the provisions that we talk about uh really deal with adjusting setbacks of those slots to minimum, so that. Well, let me answer in two ways, one is, when we did that now, so two every five had non-conforming lot area and lot width, there's. Also a lot of other property that have non-conforming setbacks, I would estimate more than half the properties have some sort of um non-conformity condition, and obviously, we couldn't measure. Non-conformity setbacks, because we have to measure, look at two thousand four hundred ninety nine surveys, it doesn't exist, so. But there's also the provision of, you know, if you have an undersized, that is that small lot provision being exempted from having to get a variance with lot area. Every single one of them will now be complying, so to speak, so long as they meet the setbacks and coverage requirements. The idea is not to make a homeowner go to the board for a small addition, just because their lot depth is ninety nine feet instead of a hundred.
Okay. Well, uh Chris, I hope we gave you all the feedback you needed and wanted, maybe more. Um.
I love it.
Good, all right.
Actually, I do, I did one, one question.
Is this the last time that we're hearing from you then before now, and then it'll go to a um a first reading stage with council, is that kind of what your response was?
That that's part of my question is, um, if there were questions that the planning board members individually say, no, I've thought about it. Can I send my comments to Chris? I guess the question for Roger is, we we can't have communication through email. When there's obviously more than four members, so, um, I guess I'm looking for feedback from Roger, like, what should be the proper method to get some feedback?
Proper method should be that anybody who has a comment should uh email it to uh Jen, and then she can in turn convey it to you.
All right, perfect. Um and the second part of my answer, um Kim would be, this would be the last time. Until we do the consistency review sometime in the new year.
Okay, so, last call, everybody, if you have thoughts or comments, uh relay those through Jen to uh to Chris.
I I just missed, any, thanks, Chris, I mean, any written comments, I mean, if I ever in comments, I would send them to Jennifer, and Jennifer.
That's good, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay, so I think we will move on from um, from this, and.
Actually, can I ask one quick question, um? Roger, would it be appropriate if I could get copied on those to Jen, just so that the concerns of the planning board I can convey to council? Or is that, you know, if there's something that?
Yeah, that's not a problem, no, that's not a problem.
If if that could be, if if I could be, just so I'm aware of what any additional comments that the planning board has, so I can make sure that the council is aware that those those exist. So.
Yeah, that's not a problem, would it be, would it be easier to send them to Terry or just to you directly, I don't really care, I don't think it makes a difference.
I think it would be best to send it to Jen and to me.
Fine.
I don't know, Jen, is that okay with you?
That's fine with me.
Forward things to Matt and that she's sending to.
Yeah.
Okay.
So should we set some sort of internal deadline, like try to get it to me by middle of January?
Just real quickly, what's your timeframe, Chris? I mean, I'm assuming that this is, um, you know, you're gonna end up having discussions with Ed. Ed, I don't know, between you and Ed, my guess is maybe, maybe a little bit of input from me. There's gonna have to be an ordinance that's prepared. And I assume that's, and, and there's a fair amount of things that are gonna have to be in that ordinance. So it's not gonna be done between now and, uh, January the fifth. I suspect you're talking about, you know, an ordinance that'll come into place. What, the end of January, if we're lucky?
At best.
I think realistically, uh, we talked about having it ready for the first, but reorganization and this being a big ordinance, uh.
Things like that that are gonna be in the way. So I, I would think that if anybody has any comments, if you could end up having them by, you know, the first or second week in January, that way it's, uh, it, it, it's probably gonna take into account and then the ordinance will come about the end of January, beginning of February. I mean, that's just the.
And then Roger, when that draft or first, yeah, first fact is submitted, um, to council, can that be floated to the planning board at that same time?
Sure, sure, it can be as long as the council's willing to do that.
You know, whatever.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, I'm gonna move on then to, um, uh, we have a few other issues. So we have a motion, uh, for, uh, or I guess request for extension from Jason LLC. Um, they, I guess they're saying their engineer blew their deadline for submission of some of their paperwork. So Roger, do you just wanna give us the quick overview?
Yes, I will. Real quickly, um, the, when you have a subdivision, uh, a minor subdivision, you to perfect it, it needs to be filed appropriately in the county clerk's office within a hundred and ninety days. It appears as though they haven't done that. They'd asked for an extension. Uh, uh, Kim and I had talked a little bit earlier before the meeting. My suggestion is that it sounds like from, from what I read in that little letter of December the third that they, uh, are very close. I, I don't think that they need, nor do I think you should grant another a hundred and ninety days. It doesn't, all that does is encourage delay. Uh, I think you ought to give an extension of forty-five days, uh, from today's date. Uh, and then they should have more than enough time to be able to finalize the deed and, and get it over to the clerk's office.
Uh, if I may, part of the delay is getting the comments of revised plans to Jennifer. And then Jennifer will send to us. Obviously no delay on Jennifer's part, uh, but Bruce and I need time to review the revised plans because we won't sign off on deeds to be signed and filed until the plan's been satisfactory, uh, satisfactorily revised.
Oh, I thought, okay, I misunderstood. I thought.
Their engineer.
Yes, their engineer was, yeah, their engineer was delayed, delayed in getting us revised plans.
Forty-five days then?
Well, my question, Chris, do you have the revised plans?
I do now, as of last week.
Alright, so I'd make it sixty days.
And Bruce, do you think we can work with that?
Bruce, unmute, unmute yourself, Bruce.
I'll adjust. If everything's order, if it has to go back to them, uh, these re- returning the documents, uh, getting revised documents again. I know that many engineers are very busy and there are delays, so, um, I guess they could always come back to the board for another extension, but you might wanna push it to ninety days, Roger, rather than the full ride, but.
Right. I, my, my initial understanding was that all of that was done and just a matter of getting the, the deeds prepared and then your, your reviews were already taken care of. So yeah, ninety days is fine. I just don't see there's a need to go to a hundred, a hundred and ninety.
And so, um, how do, so how do we?
Uh, you would solicit a motion to ex, granted an, an extension of the approval for an additional ninety days from today's date.
Do we have that motion for the ninety-day extension?
Motion to extend for ninety days?
Okay, and do we have a second? Roger, are we doing a, a roll call or just?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Jen, uh, Jennifer, roll call, please.
Mister Brusher?
Yes.
Mister Hale?
Yes.
Miss Hand?
Yes.
Mister Kluger?
Yes.
Mister Lenaris?
Yeah, sure.
Mister Malay?
Yes.
Mister Pearlman?
Yes.
Mister Williams?
Yes.
Miss Hammond?
Yes. Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Um, so the next two pieces are, um, they are consistency reviews. I think they're rather straightforward because my understanding on both of them is that this was language that's actually being handed down um, from the state. But again, I'll just have Roger walk us through those so we understand, um, uh, what, what, what we're reviewing and what the changes are.
Yes, let's, let's, um, you're gonna need separate votes, but let me go through them both. I don't think they're terribly complicated. The first one has to do with maintenance and related guarantees. There was a change in the municipal land use law a while ago, that, you know, time seems to fly, so I can't tell you whether it was three years ago or five years ago, but, but there was a change. And as a result of that change, it, it simply gave, uh, the statute, made modifications to the statutory language uh, in terms of how, uh, guarantees, you know, bonds and things of that nature were established. Uh, your ordinance did not make the amendment to be consistent with the municipal land use law. So what's being done is that it is now being brought up to the, the, to be consistent with the statute. Nothing more than that. Uh, it is now attempting to be consistent with the municipal land use law. Uh, you don't really have an awful lot of, uh, leeway. That's what the law says. That's what you're stuck with. So, uh, cause you are a, a creature of the municipal land use law and therefore you can't really deviate in most cases, and this is one of them. So that's really what, what the first one is about. Second one is, uh, consistent as a ordinance dealing with performance. I'm sorry, is, uh, an ordinance dealing with restrictive control periods for, uh, ownership and rentals as it relates to affordable housing. I believe that most of you, hopefully you have seen, uh, the memo, uh, from, uh, Ed Schmier, your borough council to Mike Edwards. Uh, Mike Edwards is an attorney with, uh, Jeff Serenian's office. Jeff Serenian is your, um, affordable housing, uh, special counsel. Uh, they have been, I, I, I don't know this, but I'm making an assumption. They have made, uh, some discussion, or they've had discussions with regard to modifications in your affordable housing ordinance. Uh, and as a result of that, it was suggested uh, that, uh, there would be some changes to have the code reflect, uh, the recommendations that were made by uh, either Mr. Serenian and/or Mr. Edwards. Uh, so that's really what's being done. And what it talks about is uh, the affordability regulations, uh, at the end of the original thirty-year, uh, period, um, uh, which can be unilaterally, unilaterally made by the borough. So, uh, again, that is something that is in the borough's best interest because you wanna end up having uh, the ability to have as much credit for affordable housing as you can have. So both of those are really, I don't wanna say mandatory, but, but there's not really much leeway, uh, that is available in those. That having been said, I'll be happy to answer any questions if there are any, but, but Kim, you do need to have two separate motions. Uh, so that there's, we're dealing with, uh, the consistency of each.
Okay, does anyone have any, uh, questions for Roger on this? Uh, I just, on, on, uh, sub B, which is the new added paragraph, uh, is it just the initial sale that gets the recapturing? So I'm, I'm sorry. Beyond the affordable housing, it says the time of the initial sale of the unit, um, they'll impose the recapturing, but i- isn't it on anyone? Any subsequent purchaser, not just the initial?
Yes, it is.
Okay, cause the way I read it, it just applies to the initial resale. Maybe I'm missing something.
Uh, no, I, I don't think it's intended to do that. I think, um, it's indicating that it is allowing for the extension, um, uh, beyond.
Beyond the thirty years.
Beyond the thirty years, exactly. That's exactly what it's intended to do. In other words, it's a thirty-year, um, it's a thirty-year provision that says that the house has to be, or the unit, I shouldn't say the, the unit has to be affordable for thirty years, but now the the borough can indicate that it's gonna go continuing beyond that.
Alright, so seeing no other questions. Um, we will do the, um, the ordinance for the maintenance and the related guarantees first. Um, and I will make, uh, the motion to, uh, that this, uh, ordinance is, uh, consistent with the master plan. Or it is not inconsistent with the master plan about that. Uh, do we have a second? Pedro, um, Jen, roll call, please.
Mister Brusher?
Yes.
Mister Hale?
Yes.
Miss Hand?
Yes.
Mister Kluger?
Yes.
Mister Lenaris?
Yes.
Mister Malay?
Yes.
Mister Pearlman?
Yes.
Mister Williams?
Yes.
Miss Hammond?
Yes. Thank you. Um, okay, and now we will, um, make a motion for the, um, uh, the affordable housing, uh, ordinance.
I can make a motion.
Okay, go for it, Jeff.
Make a motion that, uh, this, that the, the ordinance is not inconsistent with the master plan.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Seconded by Matt, we'll say Matt, sorry. Um, okay, Jen, roll call, please.
Mister Brusher?
Yes.
Mister Hale?
Yes.
Miss Hand?
Yes.
Mister Kluger?
Yes.
Mister Lenaris?
Yes.
Mister Malay?
Yes.
Mister Pearlman?
Yes.
Mister Williams?
Yes.
Miss Hammond?
Yes. Thank you, Jennifer. Um, Scott, do you have anything that you need to share with the group about zoning or building or?
Um, no, actually, nothing, nothing new, really. We just, um, there's the house that they're gonna start building over down on the end of South Adelaide. That's about it.
On the end of, oh, right, yep.
Yeah, that's about it. It's been a little slow.
Alrighty, um, and I guess I, Jeff?
A quick question, um, for the thirty-one road.
For the what?
I'm sorry, regarding the thirty-one road project, um, is there a sense of, do you know, Scott, when, uh, they might be able to, might be, uh, the developer paving the, um, putting in the bike lane on Walter? Do you know when they anticipate doing that?
No, I don't.
It's a good question because, uh, Terry and I are gonna meet with the developer next Friday to kind of go over the outstanding improvements, including the infrastructure.
Yeah, I'll be joining you for that, Chris, I believe, and.
I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, I looked at the site yesterday. And, um, they don't even have the pavement down yet, but it's a tough time to strike because it won't last long in this cold weather. But they will have to strike the parking spaces maybe temporarily, and they said they would do it when they striped, so. I don't have a sperm date, but we'll probably find out when we have that meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah, they're, they're, um, planting what I would call dead trees, although I guess they're just trees that have already wintered over. So clearly they are, they are gung ho about checking off their checklist over there.
That and the sprinkler system, they're going to town.
Yeah. Uh, okay, Jen, is there anyone from the public? Um, I'm gonna open the meeting up to the public. If there's anyone from the public, you'll let us know.
Yep, we have no attendees.
No. Okay, then I will, um, I guess close the, uh, uh, the public, uh, comment portion. And, um, so I have a final announcement to make, which is my, uh, I'm gonna, uh, resign from the board. This was my, this was my, end of my third year of my fifth third year or tenth third year or something. Um, but my, my, um, yeah, my, uh, my term is up, and so I'm going to step down. Um, and then upon here, and then, uh, you know, it's been obviously a decision that I've been making for a long time. I have mixed feelings about it because I've come to respect all of you and we have such fine professionals. And obviously this is a big part of um, the way I participated in, in civic life here in Highland Park for many years, but I think it is time for me to, to step away. Uh, um, and so in, in doing that, I'd also learned, uh, I, I sent Gail my, uh, a letter, um, saying so, and then uh, I think within about, uh, if several hours of that, and then within a week of that, I also heard from, um, Alan Kluger, who, um, is also not going to um, to continue on in his term. And then Steve Nolan, actually, um, he also, his term is also up as mine is in December, and he's not gonna, um, um, uh, re-up as well. And I, I kept sort of holding on, waiting, thinking that, well, maybe someday we'll meet together in person and we can have like a final meeting and I would actually see all in person, but I, I don't know when that's gonna happen. So things seem to be going the opposite direction. So I feel sad that I have to say um, farewell via Zoom, but, um, I guess once you guys are all meeting in person again, I'll just have to come and make wisecracks from the, the gallery instead of from the, from the dais. Um, so I also though would, um, like to, so in, I'm, I'm, I guess I, I've sent my letter, I formally resigned, so um, I would also like to, um.
Can I interrupt one second, one second? Um, I, I just like to comment that during the time that I've been here, uh, Kim, I don't know what that was. Kim, Kim has been the, the chair and it has been my distinct pleasure to work with her. Uh, she has been professional and, uh, prepared at all times. And I think that, uh, it's, it's a loss, uh, that, that, um, I think you all will feel. The same is true with, with Alan, uh, and with Steve. I think that, uh, but all three of you have been mainstays of the board. From what I understand, that mainstay has been for a period of, in excess of twenty years or something like that. So I wanted to just acknowledge uh, the experience that I've had with you for the, a lot shorter period and wish you all the best. And hopefully you all will come back and, uh, at least say when we finally get together that we can end up, um, you know, sort of honest to God shaking hands and, um, saying, uh, our goodbyes of the, in person as opposed to this way. Uh, and then of course, uh, you can also, uh, be in the peanut gallery and tell us when we're doing something wrong.
I, I was gonna add, uh, so I can't speak for Steve, although he did, uh, I did speak to him earlier today. Unfortunately, he couldn't be on the call. We're not, um, I don't know if it's resigning, you know, retiring, you know, from the board, not in protest because Kim is leaving, though, you know. And if not, that's not the reason why, why we're leaving. Um, but I think as, uh, Roger said, it's been twenty, I was trying to actually figure out when I joined the board and the only one who may, not that he's gonna remember, but Bruce, you were, you were on the board when I, when I joined sometime in the mid to late nineties. So it's been, it's been a long time and this is probably um, a good time to step off. Um, personally, I don't spend as much time, um, in Highland Park as I used to. Houses emptied out. Um, other places, uh, to go and to be, uh, work-wise, personal-wise, et cetera, not, not, not moving out of town, but I felt it was a good time. We've sort of set things in motion with the redevelopment plans and things will come along. Hopefully, you know, you know, with that and, and, um, you know, we've, uh, we feel we've done good work here and it's time for I won't say next generation, but more like new blood, you know, uh, for, um, you know, for the board, you know, going forward. So we just felt this, at least I felt, and Steve agreed, this was, this was a good time to, to step off and, uh, and allow the, the board and council to, uh, to move forward. And so I thank everyone, uh, you know, for all the years, those of you who have been on the board, I appreciate working with everyone, speaking with everyone. Um, you know, there is a, uh, tradition in, in the Jewish faith before certain Jewish holidays to ask forgiveness from people, you know, before certain holidays, you know, to, of anything that we may have said or done. So I'll take this opportunity, you know, to ask forgiveness for anything, you know, I tend to be sometimes a little ornery at times, especially maybe in the later years about things, but everything I may have said or asked was always what I felt was in the best interest of, of the, of the town and, and the citizens of the town and what I, what I believed in. And, uh, as I said, look, I've really enjoyed, enjoyed my time on the board and, um, and good luck to everybody.
Thanks to you, Alan.
Yeah, thank you, Alan.
Thank you, Alan.
Very dedicated and thoughtful service. Um, and, and I do see this as a, an opportunity, a time of, of opportunity for the board that, that three people that have been around for a long time are, are kind of leaving and making, and making room. Um, and, um, you know, I think, um, Gail has some ideas about, um, who shall appoint, and I'm hoping that there is, you know, more diversity and, and representation, um, uh, in that. And, uh, and I think it's, uh, yeah, I think there's a lot of opportunities. And, uh, and I think it's, uh, yeah, I think there's a lot of opportunity in this. Um, and with that, I'm actually, um, my, my parting, uh, called duty here will be to, uh, I would, um, with great honor, like to, um, to nominate Rebecca Hand as, um, the next chair of the Highland Park Planning Board. Um, so I, I will make that motion, and I guess we will, um.
We need a second.
I will need, again, we'll all raise your hands at one. I saw Matt will take Matt's, uh, hand. Um.
We do need a roll call.
And we will generally need a roll call, please.
Mr. Brusher.
Yes.
Mr. Hale.
Um, yes, just making sure that we, she's going to say yes if we do, right?
Well, we'll have to say. Said the way, so what I should have said was, um, right, that I would, that I would, um, that I happily nominate, um, Rebecca and, um, and that I, I had actually already cleared this, so I knew that I, that she would accept. But formally, yes, I was, I guess we should say, would you, you accept? And then.
It, it would be my distinct privilege, um, to accept a chair appointment. This, being part of this board is a really important, uh, opportunity for me. I've really enjoyed it, and I would really enjoy continuing to help captain it forward into the future. We have a lot of work to do, and I'm excited to do it.
Excellent.
So when I second her.
Okay, now, Jen, roll call, please.
Mr. Brusher.
Yes.
Mr. Hale.
Of course, yes.
Miss Hand.
Yes.
Mr. Kluger.
Yes.
Mr. Linares.
Yes, of course.
Mr. Malay.
Yes.
Mr. Pearlman.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Hammond.
So I think technically I have now resigned, but as a, I've given honorary, um, yes vote to, uh, to Rebecca. Uh, so.
Miss Hand, uh, I think that where we stand at this point, unless you have something further to say, the, uh, last, first and last uh, order of business for this meeting for you is to call for a motion to adjourn.
Well, just before I do that, I'm going to ask that either Roger can send me Kim's lovely speech that she announces at the beginning of every meeting. So that I'm prepared.
To you right before every meeting.
Really the one who runs the show around here.
I, I think we all know that, but, uh. Yeah.
Could we also, everybody should know if you don't, that Jen passed her state exams, so.
Oh, hi.
That's kind of a cool deal. I'm not sure if I was supposed to say that or not, but she, she said she did, so congratulations, Jen.
Excellent.
Jokingly, should we ask which exam she passed?
One of those that the state asked her to do.
The clerk, right, as clerk, Jen?
Yeah.
Yeah, clerk.
That's great. All right. Well, until January 2022, would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Alan Williams, seconded by Patrick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hi. Good night, everybody.
Here, everybody. Good night.
Hey, Jen, are you still there?
Yeah.
Um, are you still recording?
Hold on, let me end this. I don't know if it's going to kick you out, though. Hold on.
Okay.